Did all laws is wrong.
And the donate.
Then I'm always gonna have a short, um, to always stop right before the news. So you just read up till it was too.
Tell you the story later if you don't need to hear it. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is five o'clock and this is the April first. Meeting of District 882 Regular School Board Meeting. Happy April Fool's Day and welcome back from spring break to everybody. So please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and its states. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
We're gonna move into approval of our tentative agenda. We have changed one item on the agenda. And that on the tentative agenda, we were gonna have a vote on the tennis court issue. That's gonna move to our work session this evening. And then we're gonna take a vote on the April fifteenth meeting. So that's the one small change that we've made to our tentative agenda. So I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. We do not have any citizens comments this evening. Moving into fiscal stability, we have consent agenda items for the approval of minutes and personnel matters for April the first. I think I'm gonna divide this into minutes and personnel because we have the.
If you, I mean, if you just. You'll be fine.
Okay. The consent agenda items contains our personnel matters, our agenda, our minutes from March the eighteenth. And our resolution renew, non-renewing probationary teachers and Title One teachers on our personnel issue. Members received this in advance. This has been worked on for quite a number of weeks. And had the opportunity to ask regarding the personnel matters in particular. At this point, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda forward. Motion made by Casey Root.
Second.
Seconded by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor? No, we read the resolution before. So we're gonna read the two resolutions. This is slightly different than how we've done it in the past, which is why I'm fumbling just a little bit with my language up here. Rather than just sending it through as a personnel issue, we do have two resolutions which are gonna be read.
Resolution number one. Item thirteen, the PMS relates to the fourth, quantify the district in a timely manner. In accordance with the teacher's master agreement regarding their intent to return from extended leave of absence. Each teacher's previous position is noted. As of May sixth, two thousand twenty-four, board mean the board will act on a recommended internal transfers. For the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year, the assignment for each of the four returned teachers will be noted at that time. Item six on the PMS is a memorandum of agreement between the district, EMM, and an individual teacher. For the purposes of extending the teacher's probationary period, Minnesota law allows individual teachers to waive their right to continuing contract status. This case, in this case, a teacher was hired with the principal's understanding that the individual be subject to a three-year probationary period. However, after this particular teacher was hired last spring, the Minnesota legislature enacted a change to Minnesota statute one twenty-two A. My four zero subdivision five that allowed three consecutive years of experience in another state to satisfy the probation period in Minnesota. Therefore, the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year became this individual's only year probation in our district per statute. Principal Colwell and Principal Hanson have requested additional year probation for this individual. The teacher has agreed. EMM is a signature as well. Item seven, the PMS is a memorandum of agreement between the district, SEIU and Gary Craft. Head custodian at Pinewood Elementary. Gary has served the district for more than thirty-eight years and has requested. What?
To read that. I think just the resolution.
Yeah. Mine or?
Back up to the agenda, agenda here. And then click on the top. Yeah.
Well, it's a little shorter. Okay.
Probably should have rehearsed this.
Sorry, I wasted your time. I was misinformed of what I was reading. Uh, whereas those individuals presented currently on the median gender probationary teachers in independent district number eighty-two be resolved by school board. Independent district number eighty-two that pursuant to Minnesota statute one twenty-eight forty subdivision five and the district master agreement, the teaching contracts of those presented probationary teachers in independent district number eighty-two. Shall be renewed at the end of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year effective June sixth, twenty twenty-four. Be it further resolved that the written notice be sent to said teachers regarding non-renewal of the teaching, teacher's teaching contract. Okay. Two. Whereas those individuals presented accordingly on the median gender probationary Title One teachers in independent district number eighty-two. Be resolved by the school board of independent district number eighty-two that pursuant to Minnesota statute one twenty-two A. Forty subdivision five that the district master agreement, the teaching contracts of those presented. Probationary Title One teachers in the independent district number eighty-two shall be renewed at the end of. Shall be non-renewed at the end of the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year effective June sixth, twenty twenty-four. Be it further resolved, the written notice be sent to said teachers regarding the non-renewal of the teacher's teaching contract.
Is there any further discussion from the board? So this is an action item. All those in favor of approving the two resolutions and the personnel matters as listed. And the agenda minutes from March the eighteenth, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. Sorry for the the little bit of confusion about the order in which we conducted that item. Moving on to item number six, we have collaborative connections. We have some generous donations. Superintendent Olson will be discussing those.
Right, we have two donations. This we have two thousand dollars from UMC. This one is going towards our, sorry. First Robotics Team. And we also have two thousand dollars going from the American Legion Post two sixty. Action of Boys Golf. Fantastic, again, that our community comes forward and supports all of our activities and our academics. So we appreciate that immensely. There is a resolution.
Therefore, be resolved by myself, Scutis, ignorant attitude to gratefully accept the following donations from UMC. Two thousand dollars for the First Robotics Team. And the American Legion Post two sixty, two thousand dollar donation for the Boys Golf Team.
Second.
Motion made by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor of accepting our generous donations, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion for resolution of gifts, gifts is accepted six zero. And thank you very much to our community partners. Moving on to item number seven, teaching and learning. We have with us this evening, our Community Education Department. Jeremiah Mack and his coordinators are going to give us a briefing on community education. Welcome, Mr. Mack.
I'm gonna talk a little. They get to spend talk most of the time, not me. So today we have six, five of them here. One is sick, Andrea six. So I will actually cover Andrea. She went home ill today. We have Jill Deshane, our EBE manager. Stephanie Lamb, our enrichment and marketing coordinator. Jen Johnson, our early learning corner. Ryan Sidell, our foundation, soon to be foundation and theater manager. And Brendan LeBeau, our recreation facility manager coordinator as well. So just a little bit about, just kind of our overall program goals that we set with our advisory council. Every year this is, we do work, this is where kind of our base foundation is. We try to make effective use of our district facilities. We try to coordinate with other local service organizations, businesses, community groups, whoever that may be. That want to participate and maximize our resources within our community to avoid duplication of services the best we can. We try to create a balanced programming that services all segments of our population. As you know, we service zero through death. For the school district that services all twenty-three thousand plus citizens in our school district. And then we try to determine on an ongoing basis what are we do, what we need. And what gaps need to be filled within our community that we can try to reach out and create new programming and content or create new needs within our community. With that, these are our six main areas. We start with the youngest through our newest. We'll start in with our newest one, which is Ryan, since that might be the different questions with our starting our foundation. So with that, start with, bring them all up and we'll start with Jen.
So in our early learning program, we, I work with the early childhood, family education, the preschool, and then our early childhood screening. And so so far this year, we've had four hundred and thirty families who have registered either for classes, ECFE classes. Or special events. And within those events, so far we've done Big Wheels. We've done a couple Parent Night Out. And we just held our EEC prom in March, which was really, really fun. Also, just so everyone knows, this year, it's the fiftieth year of ECFE for the state of Minnesota. And we are gonna be celebrating that in May. We will be having family fun out at Bertram Park and we will have the Teddy Bear Band joining us. They've created a song especially for ECFE. And so we're honored that they're gonna come and share that with us, along with a lot of their other songs that they, they do for kids. And just a little note, our ECFE program was established in nineteen eighty-five. And so there's a little tidbit for you. Our staff will be celebrating this with other staff at the Minafi Conference in April. And we're hoping that we will have the governor or somebody from the governor's office that will be coming to do a proclamation for ECFE at that conference. And then we won't show this video tonight, but if you wanna reference it, we're featured in the Region Seven. Video that features all the districts within our region. And so that's a great honor for us. School readiness this year, we have two hundred and fifty preschool students at the Eastview site. And then we have twenty-three students currently out at Nature Based. And then for early childhood screening, so far we've serviced over two hundred children ages three to five.
You know, I got texts during Rotary today. I'm like, who's texting me? Oh, someone's sick. So I said, don't come back in. You're throwing up. There's no need. As you know, we started many years ago with Kids Castle. Then we transitioned when Dr. Faber's here, moving over to our own in-house childcare program. With Andrea coming on board and then he had our first year and then we got COVID. So we've had a fun trial run over our six years of having child, school-like childcare. Currently during the school year, we offer three sites. Eastview is for your pre-K K students. And then we have Little Mountain, for Little Mountain students in Pinewood during that, during the school year, during the summertime, we do condense. We still have an Eastview site and we do have a shared site between Little Mountain and Pinewood. This year we're at Pinewood. Last year we were at Little Mountain. So we do back, back and forth, but it is flexible based on construction projects throughout the district where we will offer student, offer childcare. Andrea currently has over fifty staff. And we, it's always a revolving number of either high school students and adults mixing in and out with a variety of full-time staff. We have, we have fifty-one more students this year, which means we have some staff this year. So the more staff we get, it's usually not a space issue. The more staff we get, the more students we can service. Did find out recently that Kids Castle is closing in town shortly. So that is going to drive our demand further up for more students and more families that will need care. So that will be a challenge for us is continually trying to find staff to service the needs of our community members. With the summer, we are, she already has thirty-four more students than we had last summer. So she said we have around one hundred and twenty to one hundred and fifty a day at Pinewood. And we run around a hundred a day at Eastview. All summer long, we're only closed on major holidays and a couple of days at the beginning of the summer and a couple of days at the end of the summer as we transition between program years. We also are certified center by the state of Minnesota and we had our licenser in and I think had one violation and that's usually on a paperwork. So we did very good. Last year we had no violations and our licenser said that was, I think the first she's had with no having a violation. So. And this year Andrea has also met with our high school students to help start recruiting high school students to come mark, do work service with us. Next school year with the high school starting later and knowing that we'll have a less demand in the morning, we'll have a higher demand after school. So we're trying to get those, work with high school and youth service to get those student workers in to get some career training. But also they're very good employees and it's a great work experience for them, especially if they go to education or something else. All right. Andrew done better than I did, but it's hitting, so.
A quick question.
Yes, Casey.
You mentioned space wasn't a concern, just staffing was a concern. So with Kids Castle closing, I don't know exactly when, would you be able to absorb everyone at that location and still not have a space issue?
Yeah, cuz we have shared space as long as we have access, you know, in each building we can get into before and after school. We do have a couple of permanent spaces to house our stuff. But we can get into and out of gymnasiums or the cafeterias, libraries, you know, we can go into certain classrooms that aren't always as busy.
Okay.
So it's just working with each building of based on how many kids we would absorb in each building of.
We could handle all that capacity.
Correct. As long as we have enough staff. So we always have to stay within our ratios. So and then also depends upon too, if the student has an IP and what those IP needs are. We might be able to take one student in with one staff or it might be able to take ten or twelve students in with one staff. So it just kind of depends upon who's next on the list. Come into the program.
Okay.
Do we have anyone on a, on a waiting list at the moment?
Uh, there is, but I didn't peek through which, what it is, but it's the smallest it has been. So and I don't, I didn't break down her list of it's, if it's summer waitlist or if it's school year waitlist or a mix of, or next year waitlist. So, cuz I think there's only fifty-one on the waitlist or pending contracts. So there could be three different options.
No, we were working with the high school students and Tony Chido to put together a pathway for high school students. And so we thought we had problem solved and we're ready to meet the staffing demands. And now with Kids Castle, I have new staffing demands and haven't addressed that cuz we're just finding that out over spring break here, so.
Yeah, Karen started emailing Andrea very well. You're like, what? We had no idea. So they're getting in. And we just opened registration at the beginning of March, so we've been open for months. So we, she's just slowly been picking through and as new staff get on board. And we might hold a little bit for the some school year, try to get the summer ones and then wait to see what our staffing numbers are. Once we get new staff hired for the fall and then take a bunch in at one time. You don't wanna oversell and then staff quit or get different jobs. Kinda stuck. All right, Brendan. I, I'd move forward.
Hi, I'm Stephanie. I'm the marketing enrichment coordinator. I'm gonna be starting my thirteenth year here in the district, July, in July. So I'm excited about that. So my goal and priority is just basically providing a variety of enrichment classes for adults and youth. Right now, we produce three catalogs every year, winter, spring, summer, and fall. And along with that, I do email marketing and through Peachjar as well as social media marketing. I guess one of my challenges is always finding instructors and, you know, to offer new classes. It's always a challenge. I am excited though cuz I got a few new ones for the summer and one of them is my daughter, Evy. She's a really good artist. So she's gonna come in this summer and teach some art classes. And Shelley Hughes, she's a school counselor. She's gonna offer some college prep classes with us for juniors and seniors. Getting ready for them to apply for college. And then right now, like we are in our winter, spring session, but summer planning is basically wrapping up right now. I sent off the catalog for summer last week. So that's at the printer right now and that should come out hopefully in the mail around the eleventh. And registration will open summer on the twelfth. The other part of my job is planning trips, day trips for adults. I partner with STMA and Annandale, Big Lake, and now we have a new partner in Maple Lake. And so I plan all the trips, send all the information to them. They advertise registrations on their own for that. And I have a, we did a, just kind of started doing a couple overnight trips. So this fall, we did our first three-day trip, which was really successful. I wasn't able to chaperone that one cuz I do chaperone all the trips when I can. I broke my rib, so I couldn't go on it this last fall. So actually the director at STMA, she went on it and it was, she said it was just a blast. So I do have another three-day trip planned for next October. That will be exciting. It's an Amtrak train trip to Milwaukee. So I'm really hoping that I get enough people to make that a go. And yeah, other than that, we do just at one trip a month basically for adults and we just kind of go all over the state. And it's kind of exciting and regulars that I like to see on our buses. Yeah, that's about it. Any questions? Okay, thanks.
Hey, I'm Brendan LeBeau from Idiot. Obviously wrecking facilities. Been here for thirteen years, fourteen years, something like that. I do all of our, all of our youth and adult sports. It's my main kind of thing with the recreation. So we, I do all of our coordinating, planning, developing, implementing and everything you can do with adult and youth recreation. I kind of just did a couple of highlights from the winter. We run a ton of volleyball leagues, women co-ed. We actually, over the winter, we had ninety-nine teams. So it's, and you know, each team is bringing five to seven people throughout our community each and every week. So that adds up to a lot of people. My job is just to fill the schools with as much stuff as possible. So try not for as much as possible. This year, our new one was pickleball leagues with Chris Shima, actually over here at the middle school. She helps run them. And we have seventy-seven participants in our three different leagues for that and they meet every week as well. The other aspect of my job is kind of to work with the youth, youth associations, the booster clubs and work to put together tournaments. We ended up doing two boys tournaments and two, and one girls tournament this year, which brought, what did I say, a hundred and thirty-eight teams to Monticello over three different weekends. So we try and fill up that field house. We know how nice it is and we try and fill it up as much as we can every weekend. Overall, since June, so that includes their summer stuff, we brought in, just in the recreation department, over two hundred and forty K in revenue. Between our camps, our leagues and our tournaments, we are non-stop, always busy. So. As you can see in my picture there, we, we also, the fishing team gets to fall under my department, which is really cool for me as a, as a fisherman myself. You can see in that picture, we actually have the, the state champs on our team right now. Garrett Worm and Derek Sype. Sype is a, he's a senior this year and Garrett graduated last year, but they actually went out and won the entire state tournament last year. And each won twelve and a half grand in scholarships. So very proud of that. They beat out like a hundred and fifty teams that weekend. So very proud of that. Fishing team, I think this year we have like sixty-five or seventy kids. So it's, it's a, it's an awesome opportunity to get the kids out every week. Another part of my aspect of my job is to do the facility use. So that's everything with either, anything during non-school time. Trying to fill up that's all of our five schools as much as we possibly can. That's, that's both internally and external renters. As you guys are probably very familiar, we fill up that, the high school, the field house, especially almost every single weekend in the winter and brings a lot of money into Monticello, not just the school district, but the town itself. So we got a dance competition this weekend and I know every single hotel from here to Maple Grove is booked. And I guarantee every restaurant during time, during the day on both Saturday, Sunday are gonna be packed. So. Bring a lot to this community. So any questions? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jill Deshane. Thanks for having us tonight. I work with adult basic education and I've been with the district now. Where it'll be, the end of this year will be twenty-five years. So I'm pushing my limits up there too. Adult basic ed is broken up across the state into thirty-nine consortiums. Monticello was the fiscal agent for one of them. And basically my territory is, I listed all the towns we have there. But we go from, we just added Malac, Stern, Malacs County Jail. We have Sterns. Then we go to Lester Prairie to the west. Down to West Tonka, St. Michael and pretty much everything areas. And we try to offer a class per, per district, per school district, depending on the need and where that is. So it's either English as a second language or GED classes, basic skills to get better jobs. And we also have two businesses at this time that are with us. One here in the, in town is Washburn. And the other one is JB meets, JB meets in St. Michael, which makes no name stakes. And we have English classes for all of their, try to help them communicate better and more effectively with the aligned workers and the other. So let's see. I tried to hone down some of these stats, just a couple of them here for the Monticello area. It's not the whole huge territory. But last year in Monticello, we served seventy-five students from over twenty-two countries. With a top language being spoken, top fiber from Mexico and then the United States, El Salvador, Honduras, Central America, basically. And like I said, Spanish is the main language spoken. Anybody can come to our program if you are seventeen and older, not enrolled in high school. We are separately funded by state and local funds, so we can't. Basically. So they have to be officially dropped from the rosters. And if they're seventeen or eighteen, they do need an age waiver. They can't just take their GED and leave. They need to have their parents' permission if they're seventeen or eighteen and to show that they're prepped and ready and people know that. This process. So. We have more on our website, all of our different sites listed and the times and the teachers. We currently have a staff of almost thirty and subs. So it's been a challenging year trying to keep them all staffed too, especially when the majority of our classes are for one night, two, three hours at night. Some teachers like it for one extra night of work and some places are harder and more difficult to fill as everybody's been facing that challenge. So we also have the workforce center here in town. It's now called Career Force. It's now called Career Force. And I think that's about it. Any other questions from anyone? Okay, thanks again for having us.
All right, good evening, everyone. For those who I've not been formally introduced to yet, my name is Ryan Seidel. I am a seasoned employee here because I've been here a whole six months. It's been a lot of fun. I am your theater manager here for the school district. I am in charge of overseeing all of the productions and events that take place within our auditoriums, both here at the middle school and over at the high school. I provide all the technical support for those productions and then I also offer training to our student technicians who are interested in learning lighting, sound design. And then I recently also just took on the role of executive director of our new grant foundation, of which the name is currently pending, so for the time being, I'll just be referring to it as the foundation. Our main goal of the foundation is to sort of essentially provide a centralized hub to secure both public and private funding, which we can then pump back into the school district and provide a multitude of additional educational opportunities for the students here, which can take form in STEM classes, in arts programming, in any sort of after-school club that students are willing to participate in. So, as you can see, we're trying to keep it relatively broad in how we want to allocate these funds. Where we are currently at with this foundation, we have drafted up our bylaws and our articles of incorporation and we are currently working with our legal team to finalize all that paperwork, make sure everything looks good and we don't run into any issues with the IRS. Once we get that paperwork finalized over the next few weeks, we can actually begin enrolling folks into the board of directors, of which I've already had a handful of people reach out to me via email to express their interest in joining that board of directors. So, once we get those folks sort of in the loop, we can finalize a name for the foundation and then we can look to hit the ground running for our community fundraising efforts. And then over to the theater and auditorium side of things, since I got here back in October, we have provided a multitude of updates and improvements to both of our auditoriums in the form of theater lighting for the stage, which has, which has upgraded the visual experience for audience members. We have purchased a number of new wireless microphones, which has improved the sound quality of our musical productions. And we have purchased all-new modules for the lighting grid over at the high school, which has tidied up the previous issues that we were having with the house lights in that auditorium. And then one last little bit of newsworthy here, we were actually able to take home some honors as the Performing Arts Center over at the high school was selected as the best theater playhouse in the Reader's Choice APG East Central Minnesota Magazine. So, I think word is getting out about the work that we're doing around here and I believe that we are building a fine reputation for ourselves, so. Pending any questions, that is all I have.
Give one quick little piece of information to supplement that great Ryan, awesome report. As everybody here has been doing a great job of letting us know a little bit about programs that you've been doing for, you know, decades and some, or a decade or six months. It's great to make those connections. We are working with Community Giving, just the same group that we're working on with the scholarship committee. That was very important to Tina and the business department and my department over the last five years is the scholarship committee we've been really proud of and things they've done for our seniors. But it's, running it through our department has been very challenging because we can't get some of the returns on investments legally that private organizations can. So, giving this program, the, or setting up a foundation, we're in collaboration with Community Giving. So, that way, it's, it'll be a nonprofit organization where we'll have some vested interest on the board, but really, it won't be a function of the, of your, of your position. One of you may be asked to serve on that as a connection, but that, it does, it's not going to be a function of your position and that's by design. You really want to get this away, we want to get this really off of our books, just like the scholarship, we wanted to get off of our books so that it can be maximized investment, return on investment and then also just not allowing us to go further with our pre-K through grade thirteen students.
And one of the things that, when we talked about, people might wonder, why does a public school need a foundation? And I really think that we're on the cutting edge here in our district. Some of the larger districts in the Twin Cities have certain foundations to support their arts programs, maybe for a symphony or something. As we know, cuts come around because we're not funded necessarily to the point that we would like to be for all of our programs. So, we are very lucky in our district that we have a lot of generous community partners. This will give them a way to funnel the charitable giving, to keep some of these things in place so that we don't have to make cuts and we don't have to try to, you know, finagle things within the budget to keep a lot of things going. It also provides, as Mr. Seidel said, an opportunity to, to recruit people to fill our auditoriums when we're not using them because that is a source of revenue for the district and we have to have everything in good working order and have a good procedure in place to assist the community groups that wish to rent our facilities. So, I thank you, Mr. Seidel, for what you're doing with the foundation. I know it's a big, big, big project and we're excited to see it happening. As Superintendent Olson said, there's so much more that a nonprofit can do than we can do as a board and with our constraints. And so, we think it's going to be a really exciting venture for the district and for the community moving forward. So, is there any comments or questions from the rest of the board for our members from Community Ed?
One more thing on our foundation.
You step up to the microphone.
Just one more thing on our foundation. We're meeting on Monday with our, with Community Giving and our lawyer who's looking through all our bylaws and our goal is to be up and running by July one.
That's wonderful. That's so much faster than I.
But talk to Tina about a matching, you know, staff giving pride or, you know, that kind of stuff, but trying to find different ways to creatively put money in. Like we talked the other day about if every staff gave a little bit of money, how much, how many staff, how much money we could raise annually with, then looking at finding people that would match those funds, different foundations in town to match that fund, so.
I hope you'll come back in the, maybe in the fall and give us another update on how the foundation, as it came into place over the summer and the fall, I think we'd like to hear.
Why do you have to cheer the annual gala?
Well, we, we would certainly look forward to an opportunity, if the new foundation would like to do so, to thank, formally thank all of our partners in the community. That's something that we're very limited, as a matter of fact, we can't just throw a big party to thank our generous donors because of the rules on how, what you can spend school board money on. So, we've long, long said that we are overdue for a proper thank you to the community and we hope the foundation will consider us as a partner in that, being able to say thank you as we move forward. So, thank you, guys. Do you have any other comments, Superintendent?
Well, I mean, and this is, I think, a wave of the future, so our community education department, we're going to have them in front at least two times a year, just to really update on what's going on because it's so easy to talk about the, the general education fund and, you know, and, and programming. It's really important to realize what's going on in the community. We don't stop and this is the crew that doesn't stop on nights and weekends and, and we just really need to begin paying tribute to the efforts that they're doing in the evenings, but then also the great early childhood programming that we have during, before school, after, during school and after school. So, just, yeah. So, welcome to the new wave of the future. Have their dates, they know Jeremiah does, hopefully the team has seen that as well and will continue to get to know you guys better and see the great things that you're doing.
Yeah, we're very proud to have brought things forward. I mean, I really think that we're doing things that big districts do and we're really not a huge district and I think we can be really proud of that. We hate to make cuts. That is, that kills every one of us on the board whenever we have to make any cut to a program or service. And this is a creative way that we can keep a lot of stuff in place and grow some programs in a way that keeps us within our budget as well and allows in a lot of new partners into the school programs as well. So, thank you very much and we look forward to hearing the good work you're doing. Thank you. Moving on to our first reading of policies, Mr. Rob Daniker, Director of Human Resources, is going to give us a briefing on five or six policy, five, one, two, three, four, five policies for first read this evening.
All right, Chair Zebra, members of the board, Superintendent Olson. So, as Chair Zebra said, we do have five policies for first reading tonight. And just before we go through them, we talk about this from time to time, but the policy committee meets monthly and we do a deep dive into the policies, the language suggestions from MSBA, board member insights, all sorts of things. And so, some of the, sometimes we review potential policies in those policy meetings and they don't make it to the public setting and so we have one or two of those tonight that have taken a little bit more time for incubation, so, but we think they're good for consumption at this point. The first one is policy four twenty-five and the purpose of this policy is to establish a staff development program and carry, and structure, excuse me, to carry out planning and reporting on staff development that supports improved student learning. The policy committee did have significant conversation on this one and we actually did seek out some input directly from MSBA on this one with, with relevance to a section related to MDE grants and that nature.
Is there any questions on four twenty-five for the first read? Kate, you?
All right. Moving on to five thirteen, the purpose of this policy is to provide guidance to professional staff, parents, and students regarding student promotion, retention, and program design. This one is fairly straightforward and again, it's in the title, it's in the purpose regarding student promotion, retention, program design.
Any questions or comments from the board? Kate, thank you.
Next one is policy six oh one. So, the purpose of this policy is to establish broad curriculum parameters for the school district that encompasses the Minnesota academic standards and federal law and our line with creating the world's best workforce. World's best workforce, just for public, was legislation in twenty thirteen at the state level that provided things like the world's best workforce committee, the five goals, now four goals of the world's best workforce committee purpose, annual reporting, things of that nature as well.
Questions from the board? Okay, moving on.
All right. The next one is six oh three, curriculum development. The purpose of this policy is to provide direction for continuous review and improvement of the school curriculum. And so, of note on this one, does establish that the district's advisory committee, we have a committee of this purpose using a slightly different name, but meeting sufficiently the statutory requirements.
I believe we changed the name of the committee to be more in line with the policy. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Yes.
Getting a nod from the Director of Teaching and Learning, yes.
Any questions from the board? Well, thank you, Mr. Daniker. You might have seen us a blast in the door from policy committee two minutes before the meeting started. We use every minute of our two hours on the first Monday of the month, so we really do have some robust conversations about specific language and we have a new procedure in place where we look at the old policy, the new policy, the MSBA policies, language changes, statutes, and what's all up there on the big screen. So, I thank you for implementing that. I think we're more efficient in our policy discussions than we ever have been.
We're actually so efficient, Chair Zebra, that we have one more to go through, if that's all right.
Oh, shoot! Sorry about that.
No problem. And the last one is policy six oh four, instructional curriculum. The purpose of this policy is to provide for the development of course offerings for students. And so, really looking at, especially at the secondary level, those standards established by the state, how we are addressing those standards and everything therein.
Questions or comments? Now, we've reached the end of them. I apologize for that. They're all muddled up in my head because we've had so much discussion about them so long earlier today.
Again, no action for the board tonight, the first read.
Tonight. We'll see these again on April the fifteenth and if any of the board members have any questions prior to that, please get in touch with Bob and he will give you all of the, the updates that we've got coming through up until now. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And finding that we have no other business to achieve on our regular agenda, we're going to be adjourned at five forty-two. We will reconvene at five fifty-five for work session. So, we will be adjourning at five forty-two. You don't have to. Thank you. Ten minutes, break.